All right. Good evening. Being 7:00 PM, I will call to order the McHenry County Board Regular Meeting of November 19th, 2024, and Ms. Althoff will lead us in the pledge tonight.
But allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for our invocation this evening, we have Reverend Thomas Went from the Unity Spiritual Center of Woodstock.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Being from a spiritual center, our path is for of prayer is a little different than what you might be accustomed to, so please bear with me and know that just because my way is maybe different than yours does not make either right nor wrong simply different. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and provide the invocation for this noteworthy evening in the county's history. And so, in unity, we pray not to a God but from the presence of God in each and every one of us, which we believe exists within me and in you. And so by doing that, I affirm that all of the issues that come up today will be the ones that this board is ready to address because you're here to address them. I know that all issues will be dealt with in a fair and equitable manner, and all voices will be heard, maybe sometimes just tolerated, but that's the way we people work, that's for sure. I know that all the citizens here are here for what they believe is in the best interest of this county, and we thank them for their interest and that they showed up to to voice their opinions. We know that what we will view tonight is the democratic process at its very best because the decisions made here will be the best for this county and for all the individuals involved. And in the name of the living Christ, we say amen. Thank you.
Okay, Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Althoff. Campbell. Gattamuller. Greeno. Hendricks. Kaminski. Kearns. Kunkel. Meshes. Ness. Reinert. Sager. Shorten. Scala. Smith. Van Hoff. Von Bergen. Wegner. All present.
Okay, having a corner will proceed. It'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Mr. Scala makes the motion. Mr. Kaminski seconds. All in favor, say aye. Against, motion carries. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of previous meetings. Mr. Scala makes the motion. Mr. Gattamuller seconds. Any changes or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Against, motion carries. A good evening. I only have a handful of items to share before we move on to tonight's agenda and the important votes to approve an appropriation and levy ordinance for the 2025 fiscal year starting December 1st. As always, I'm proud of our budgeting process from the county board's diligence to the professionalism and knowledge of county administration and the eagerness of our department heads to work to keep costs down. Crafting an annual budget requires a striking striking a balance between maintaining McHenry County's financial strength and pursuing the interests of our taxpayers. And whatever final decisions we make tonight with the taxpayers, taxpayers will see the county portion of their next year's property tax bill go down. We will convene the committee of the whole or Committee on Committees meeting at 8:30 AM Wednesday, December 4th, right here in the county boardroom. The members of the committees will be chosen by the members of their respective legislative districts at the organizational meeting on December 2nd in accordance with county board rules. The scheduled meeting of the Administrative Services Committee has been canceled for that day. I wish you all and wish everyone watching us a safe and joyous Thanksgiving with family and friends, and tonight, I'd like to end my report to the county board by thanking our departing members for their service. As the old saying goes, change is the only constant in life. Every two years, we welcome newly elected members and have to say goodbye to others. During the time they were with us, Teresa Meshes, Lou Ness, John Reinert, and Kelly Wegner contributed much to our discourse. They always had the best interest of their constituents in mind, and their votes were always thoughtful and well-informed. So please join me in thanking them for their service as we present them with a small token of our appreciation for their dedication. Do any members have comments tonight? Ms. Meshes.
Thank you. Thank you. So I have two. At the March Committee of the whole meeting, a question was posed that resulted in my researching and finding out that today, November 19th, is International Men's Day. It was founded in 1992 in Malta and is currently recognized by 80 countries. At times, people feel that the only way to get ahead is to exploit the weaknesses of others or to use loopholes to get out of one's fair share. International Men's Day honors those that choose to live as an example of service and virtue. In fact, there are six pillars of this of this celebration, and they are to promote male role models that demonstrate living decent and honest lives; two, to celebrate men's positive contributions to society, community, family, marriage, childcare, and the environment; three, to focus on men's emotional, physical, and spiritual health as well as their social well-being, and in fact, that is this year's theme; four, to highlight discrimination against men in areas of law, social services, social attitudes, and expectations; five, to improve gender relations and gender inequality; six, to create a safer, better world where people can be safe and grow to reach their full potential. So I thank you, those who exemplify these pillars. I have feel that I've been surrounded by many such gentlemen in my four years on the county board, both on the board and serving the staff, and so I very much appreciate and honor you today. And my other point, I want to thank District 1 for allowing me the honor to serve on this board for the last four years. I appreciate the professionalism and dedication of the staff and the elected officials in our county, and I'm proud of the work that we have been doing and accomplishing, and I look forward to the continued success of McHenry County. McHenry County is a wonderful place to live because of the dedication to community and service. We are stronger together, and I encourage my fellow residents to stay involved, whether that be by applying for one of the open positions on the county committees and commissions, running for office, or keeping our public servants informed through calls, letters, and public comment. I am committed to community service, and although my time on this board is ending, my time serving the good of the community will continue. So I thank you to my fellow board members for all the ways that we have worked together and for all that you have taught me about service and good governance. It is my honor.
Mr. Reinert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say also, this being my last meeting, I it's been a real honor serving the people of McHenry County and in District 2, and I I just wanted to say that, you know, we all must recognize that we don't own these seats. They're bestowed on us, and I am honored to have been able to serve for two separate terms here. And I just wanted to let everyone know that I truly feel that this county is in great shape. The administrators, Sheriff Tettelman, Chairman Bueller, Carrie Peats, Scott, Adam, Melissa, all of you, it's been a pleasure to work with all of you. You're professionals, and I I'll never forget any of you. Thank you very much, and I just wanted to let all the other county board members know that I love them and I respect them very much. So, thank you.
Ms. Ness.
Well, I guess I get to say it the third time. We have an amazing staff. It's really been a privilege to work with so many of you, and to be your student, you've taught me so much in the past two years. I have enjoyed governing and learning about governing, and I wouldn't have had that experience without your support, your skill, and your expertise. And I would encourage future boards to value you as much as I value you and have valued you in the past two years. I want to thank my colleagues, my Democratic colleagues. We are the minority voice on the board. We have at times had contentious and edgy conversations among ourselves, but we have always held a responsibility for our position in McHenry County as Democrats. We are the minority party. We have to work twice as hard to not get as far, but they are amazing, and they have done amazing work. To my moderate colleagues who have done so much to mentor me as an elected official, I'm grateful. It hasn't always been pretty, and I haven't always enjoyed it, but I walk away with a much better sense of how government works and what governing means to the governed and to those who govern. I want to thank Larry Smith for being the only person in two years two years who ever admitted he made a mistake. That takes courage to say, "I was wrong," and that was an inspiration to me. I wanted to thank Tracy Von Bergen for having an open mind about the workforce housing. I did hammer her for months, and she was great as the committee chair. So I really do. I want to thank my co-chair member, Althoff, for all the work on workforce housing. And while I will miss this seat, I will not miss this seat because I have moved on. I'm ready for what next, whatever adventure shows up in my life, and I will face it with curiosity and joy.
Ms. Wegner.
Thank you. So this is my last county board meeting, and I want to say thank you to all of those who have supported me, supported the board, and supported the county government for the past six years. I have very much enjoyed representing the residents as a county board member. Many of you have become friends, and I would not have met you otherwise, so thank you all for all of your help and all of your encouragement. And although I will be leaving, I plan to continue to invest in working with the people and for the people in the county. And while I'll miss the collaboration with many of my fellow county board members, I'm actually relieved a bit that I don't have to listen to some of the misinformation any longer. I will be happy to hear, to be able to think positively and and not worry about what people are going to say in public. So for those of you who believe in our county we have great that we have great things to offer, I urge you to stand up and be strong and continue to encourage the civil discourse. I urge you to stand up for what is right and tell the truth and lead by example, even when it's uncomfortable. Unfortunately, this means that some of you might have to stand up to those in your own party, but you've been on the board long enough that you can be brave and allow the truth to be spoken. My goal was to represent all people, especially those who usually can't or won't or are unable to advocate for themselves. To represent the underserved, those who have been cast aside or ignored by some in society was an honor. We are not a homogeneous county, and we should not govern like one. I've been called an activist by some on this board because I push back on the fear mongering, misinformation, and I fight for those who are afraid or unable to speak for themselves. But helping isn't activism. Helping others is not activism. It's called loving your neighbor. And I tried to set an example of loving your neighbor and fighting for everyone while being on this board. I greatly enjoyed working with the county board and the committees and staff, and it's no doubt that McHenry County has wonderful people working for it. Thank you, Peter, Scott, Alicia, for all your hard work you put in and all of your professionalism. Thanks to Carrie for all your hard work and incredible work on the financials, and all the department heads for your help during the past six years. It's meant a lot to me. And to all the board members and staff, I'm proud of the work that we have done. I want to end by a quote from Mahama Gandhi. "If you are right and you know it, speak your mind. Even if you are a minority of one, the truth is still the truth." Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further comment, we'll proceed to zoning petitions. Do any members have items they'd like to remove from the zoning consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the zoning consent agenda. Mr. Smith makes the motion. Mr. Shorten seconds. Clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish? Motion carries. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve item 10B1. Mr. Scala makes the motion. Mr. Smith seconds. Mr. Smith.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind the board members that this is the petition that was denied, voted 7-0 to deny by the ZBA, but it comes to us the written in the affirmative. So if you want to, if you want to approve the denial, you actually will be voting no for this. So a no vote is what I will be doing to agree with the ZBA.
Okay, seeing no further comments? Okay, Clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish? Motion does not carry. Okay, we'll move on to public comment. Just a quick reminder, public comment is your opportunity to address the board. You have three minutes in which to do so. When we get to one minute left, the green light will come on, at which time then the red light will come on. If you haven't completed your comments, I would ask you to summarize. We're going to take these a little bit out of order here because some not all the same topics. So on the MFT, Carol Friend, followed by John Michaels, Mitchells?
Good evening. My name is Carol Friend. I am a homeowner from Figur subdivision in McHenry Township. My subdivision was kicked out of the MFT program when the roads, which have been private for 129 years, magically this year became public. I would like to offer some thoughts on the two resolutions regarding the MFT program that are before you tonight. Regarding the elimination of the MFT program, I understand the McDot and the Transportation Committee want to eliminate the MFT program because of the uproar about private versus public roads. I would offer that a fair way would have been to inform the townships and subdivisions with non-dedicated roads that the program would cease on April 1st, 2025. That would provide advance notice to all, the subdivisions with eligible private roads, and those subdivisions which were kicked out. It was not fair to be told in the middle of the 2024 program that your subdivision was kicked out. Regarding the resolution appropriating funds for the subdivision maintenance, when subdivisions were kicked out of the program, depending upon their finances, they may or may not have been able to do road repair. The resolution states that road maintenance expenses will be limited to work performed between June 1st, 2024, and April 1st, 2025. No one will be able to have road repair done in mid to late November, nor can work be done in early spring. Yes, there would be reimbursement for snow plowing, but the bulk of maintenance costs is for road repair. If a subdivision did not have adequate did have adequate funds for road repairs, the bill more than likely has already been paid for the subdivision. Since my subdivision was one of the ones kicked out, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have during the discussion of either the aforementioned resolutions from my perspective. Thank you.
My apologies, Mr. Mitchells or Michaels. You did not check to speak, so, okay, thank you. Next, Kirk Donald, followed by Jim Jaworski.
Hello. Hello. My name is Kirk Donald. I'm from Johnsburg. The my comment is entitled "The Power of One." The power of one person, Rosa Parks, Sergeant York, Michael Jordan, Mother Teresa, the one man who stopped the tanks in Tiananmen Square, the one person who moves out of Illinois every six minutes, 16 seconds because of high taxes. Your one vote against the county tax levy will tell McHenry County residents where we're your government, and just like you, we will find a way to meet the bills without increasing your burden. Please stop shifting the blame of high taxes on school boards. They are the walls of Jericho which will take all of us to bring down, state legislatures, voters, parents, and candidates. They are a separate battle. Be the example. Be the one body of government that stands with the people. Thank you.
Jim Jaworski, followed by Bruce Johnson.
My name's Jimmy Jaworski. We have had a new election and have new board members, will have new board members, but the board still has the same old problem of trying to balance the budget to fund many departments with limited dollars. Some board members will want to increase funding for some departments, and others will want to decrease funding to lower taxes. The McHenry County Board only receives about 7% of our property taxes. Imagine if your property tax bill was about 30% lower. A person with a home valued at about $300,000 would save about $2,000 a year. If the property tax bill was about 30% lower, it would be easier for the board to get voters to approve additional funding for departments like the McHenry County Mental Health Department. I live in Crystal Lake. School District 47 only receives 15% of their funding from the state. Article 10, Section 1 of our state constitution says the state has the primary responsibility for financing the system of public education. This means the state should be funding at least 51% of public education, not 15%. If District 47 and other McHenry County schools receive their fair share of funding, property taxes would be about 30% lower. The fundings of our schools make up about 65% of the property tax bill, and the McHenry County Board receives about 7% of the property tax bill. To get this additional to get this additional money for schools, I suggest that the board members, as citizens and others, spend time talking to their school boards, state representatives, and senators to get their school districts their fair share of funding from the state. The October 18th edition of the Northwest Herald said that since Mike Bueller has touted collaboration with other agencies, the county coordinator role has flourished. Talking with the school districts, state representatives, state representatives, and senators would increase this collaboration. If our schools receive their fair share of funding from the state, the school districts would lower their levies would lower their levies, and with voter approval, the board could raise their levies to fund departments that are badly in need of more funding. Other school districts in the state are getting their fair share of funding, and the Chicago Public Schools are trying to get another $1 billion from the state. Another unrelated article in the Northwest Herald says that the Mental Health Department needs about $16 million for their 80 programs.
If you could summarize your comments, please?
Yeah, I'm just about done. The Mental Health Department needs about $16 million for their 80 programs, and they are only getting about $11 million. Is this close to being accurate? If it is true, the Mental Health Department is about 45% underfunded. The board needs to get a lot more money funding to the Mental Health Department, and you should not use the sales tax to help with the funding. The board should get rid of the sales tax. A sales tax hurts the middle and lower-income people the most. Thank you.
Bruce Johnson?
Good evening, Chairman, and honorable members of the county board. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. My speech tonight may take an additional minute or two, so I ask for your grace as I begin. I want to start by acknowledging the incredibly difficult-
You do have three minutes.
I understand. I'm trying to abbreviate. I want to start by acknowledging all acknowledging the incredibly difficult job each of you does in trying to balance the needs of our community with the fiscal realities we face. This is not an easy task, and I know you all take your roles seriously. It is reflected in the current fiscal state of our county finances as being debt-free with over five months of reserves. But today, I stand before you to express my deep concern about the proposed property tax increase and the broader issue that this increase represents. A government has grown too large, too bloated, and too wasteful for for over too many years. This property tax increase, if enacted, will place an unfair burden on homeowners, families, and businesses that are already struggling under the weight of inflation- and businesses that are already struggling under the weight of inflation and economic uncertainty. We cannot continue to ask the people of this county to carry the load of government that has expanded uncontrollably over the last, past few decades with little regard for efficiency or accountability. Do we still need four epidemiologists on staff now that COVID is over? Does this admin building really need a new asphalt parking lot or perhaps just crack filling and a seal coat to get another five or 10 years out of it? Does this county really need to employ 1,500 people? These are only a few of the potential cost savings that we on the outside are aware of. How many more can you do? How much more can you do for less as we, the taxpayers, are having to do this hard, having to do in this harsh economy? I believe the tide is turning for our economy now that we have a president who's going to drill baby drill. We expect that energy costs will go down dramatically over the next few years, job growth will expand and our economy will get back on track, but we have a long way to go before we see it in our pocketbooks. The promise made last year that the shift of mental health tax overdue of sales tax gave property owners much needed relief, but the never-ending budget expansion continues on. For far too long, government on all levels has been growing at an unsustainable rate. The budgets have ballooned, departments have multiplied, and the programs have been expanded. Many without clear outcomes or measurable benefits. This is not about cutting essential services or abandoning our responsibility to our residents. This is about stopping the waste and mismanagement has driven our county finances into a corner. We can no longer afford the status quo. In Illinois, we see these same trends causing 10,000 people a year to leave the state because of the high cost of taxes. The tail is wagging a dog and the dog is tired of his tail wagging him uncontrollably. A budget that grows year after year with little regard for the efficiency or effectiveness of programs, it's time we must ask ourselves, what are we really getting for all this spending? Are these new departments filled and unfilled positions and programs truly serving the community or are they just perpetuating a cycle of waste?
If you could summarize your comments, please.
I'm not here to advocate for cuts due to essential services or abandon the work of this board, but I do believe we must take a hard look at the growth of county government and the inefficiency that have built up over time. Here's what I propose. First, we must prioritize efficiency. Second, let's focus on eliminating redundancy. And third, we must introduce stricter budget controls and hold departments accountable for their spending. Ultimately, we all want the same thing, a thriving and prosperous community, a community where families can live and work without the constant pressure of rising costs, a community where local businesses can grow and provide jobs, but we cannot achieve these goals by continuing to feed a government that grows without limits. As the vote is taken tonight, we, the people, will see who is for a bigger government and who is not, who is for growth of our McHenry County population and economy and who is not. It's time we place responsibility and accountability at the forefront of-
I'd ask you again to please summarize your comments, Mr. Johnson.
It's time we stop using tax hikes as a quick fix to solve problems that stem from years of waste and inefficiency. We need a government that serves the people, not a government that exists for its own growth. I urge you today to reject this property tax and commit to finding real solutions that address the root cause of our financial challenges. We cannot continue down the path of bloated government and higher taxes. We must focus on cutting waste, streamlining operations, and working together to create a more efficient and effective government that serves all the residents without overburdening them. Thank you for your time and for your service to the people of this county. We look forward to working with all of you to build a better, more efficient government that truly reflects the values and needs of McHenry County. Thank you.
Annette Freels.
My name is Annette Freels. I live in the county. I have lived in this county most of my life and I just have a few questions for the board members who are getting ready to vote on a tax increase. Tell me, do you, each individual, one of you, have to adjust your spending when costs rise in your household budget? Citizens have to. Do you, I love you, require your department heads within the county to justify by line item requests for an increase in their budget? Citizens have to. Did the board go to all their department heads and tell them to cut a proposed percentage from their budgets? Citizens have to. I'd like to use as one quick example the McHenry County Conservation District. And I will start by saying I am in no way, shape, or form against conservation. I love our parks. I love our set aside areas. But, in my mind, it's a typical government entity that takes a bond referendum that raises money for them to purchase property. What they didn't do was take into account that they would have a decreased amount of money coming into their budget after the bond was paid for. So they did not take into account all the property that they bought that they would not be able to develop nor maintain on their current, on their prior to the bond issue budget. So they asked the county for a tax increase. Typical government entity. Every person, every responsible citizen anywhere has to take into account what they bring in versus what they spend. And believe me, all of our disposable incomes have decreased significantly over the last few years. And that hurts the county. That hurts all the other things that depend, the businesses that depend on consumers. I'll give you a really quick example of my personal situation, and this is just from 2023 to 2024 on my property tax bill. I'm not going to detail the different line items, but I will say this. My property taxes have gone up $1,297 for 2024. That's an approximate 33% increase. For what? What did I get? I know we've had inflation. I know costs have gone up. Believe me, I'm the single income of my household. I know. And it's time for government entities to start looking at their own line items and looking for fraud, waste, and abuse.
Summarize your comments, please.
I'm done. Thank you very much for listening.
Fred Bach.
My name is Fred Bach and I've been a resident of McHenry County for 41 years. When I first moved here, I, you know, bought my house, I'm paying my property tax, and since that time now, I've actually, at the highest point, I've gone four times over what I initially started off with. Fact that I turned 65, it brought down some of my taxes. But I'm here just to appeal to you to vote no on this tax bill. And I think if you look around, you're seeing the constituents that you're supposed to be representing, we're all telling you, we don't want a tax increase. And I just wonder if any of you are getting all these phone calls that everybody's demanding you to raise taxes on us? If that's the reasoning behind why you want to raise taxes? But that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Move on to a new and unfinished business. I'll entertain a motion to approve item 13A. Mr. Sager makes the motion, seconded by Mr. Kunkel. Any discussion? Mr. Scala.
For the reasons that I expressed at the committee, the whole, I'll be voting no for this resolution.
Seeing no further comment, clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointments to the McHenry County Emergency Telephone System Board as of November 19, 2024. Mr. Scala makes the motion, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish. Motion carries. Do any standing committee chairs or liaisons have reports for us tonight? Mr. Scala.
Yeah, I just wanted to be, the board to be aware that on Thursday, December 5th, we will be having our finance meeting as normal. The members of the finance committee, we will still have five members from the old committee and after talking about especially the ARPA program and some of the appropriations that we have to do prior to the end of this calendar year in order to be compliant with the federal regulations, the committee felt it was in the best interest to actually have a meeting and go through everything to be able to make a recommendation to the new board at the December meeting. So we will be meeting Finance at 8:30 on December 5th.
Mr. Gotamaller.
Just to reiterate what you said a few moments ago, the Administrative Services Committee meeting, which would be normally the first Wednesday in December, will not be happening because we will be having a committee on committees meeting to organize for the next board sessions.
Ms. Althoff.
Yes, also the Law and Government Committee that was scheduled for Monday, the 25th, will be canceled due to some difficulties about getting a quorum and there's not a lot on the agenda. We'll probably reschedule that sometime in early December 9th, 10th. So mark those dates. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Von Bergen.
Another meeting update due to Thanksgiving holiday. The Public Health and Community Service Meeting will be rescheduled to Tuesday, November 26th at 8:30. Thanks.
Ms. Beschess.
I am sure that Valley High is also going to be canceled, probably because it doesn't have a chair, which it will, I'm sure, shortly. Though I wanted to point out that the Valley High member union is going to be named soon, so the names are going to be proposed to residents and staff and it'll be a chosen name. I look forward to finding out what that name is. I also wanted to say that when we created the Valley High Operating Committee in three years ago, we put on the responsibility of the chair to attend the QA QC meetings at Valley High, and I think those have been extremely valuable. So I strongly encourage the next Valley High chair to go attend those meetings. It really gives us a sense of what Valley High is doing and where their problems might be and although I don't share what happens in those meetings because it's privileged, if there was an issue we saw larger, those would come to the Valley High Operating Committee and so I hope that the next chair finds them as valuable as I did. Thank you.
Ms. Campbell.
Just two quick updates. So the Northwest Water Planning Alliance, the executive committee was canceled for this week. Our tech committee, our technical advisory committee, which includes Scott Keikendall, our water resources specialist, have been hard at work at putting together a sustainability plan for the Chicago region with regards to our water supply and so we'll be looking forward for that in the new year. The other update will be for the Emergency Management Agency. This Thursday, we are again meeting for our local emergency planning council or commission and then our coordinating council, that's this Thursday, and that will be followed by our natural hazard mitigation review. I can't believe we're here at another year. So I think we're into kind of two year of our five-year mitigation plan. So we had great participation from member communities and so I'm just encouraging any of them out there to make sure that they come and help out with our annual review on Thursday and that is at around 2:30 and we hold our meetings at the Cary Village Hall.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Just another meeting update. We're still up in the air about whether we're going to have a PED meeting in December, I believe it would be December 3rd. So pay attention to the meeting portal and if we, when the decision's made, I'll try to get an email out to everybody that's on that committee. Thank you.
Mr. Reiter.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just wanted to, under the liaison report about the McHenry County Conservation District, Mr. Terrier, obviously you know, but their referendum did pass today by, I think it was like 800 votes or something like that. They did, they got from their mail and more votes than they needed to pass it. And during the meeting, they did express their gratitude to everybody that visits the Conservation District and also to the supporters. Somebody mentioned that on their website, over 1,100 visitors that follow through send in pictures of their nature pictures and they choose those for their calendars and their calendar is really kind of neat with their photography. They give away free calendars, so, I mean, anybody that would want one would just need to contact them and they'll send them a free calendar, something that is, not only is a nice calendar for the fridge, but the photographer is really great. And one thing they don't waste any money on, Scott, is their spongy moths. They don't, they don't spray for those things and I know that I don't know the Latin word for spongy moth as well as you do, but they do realize, thank you, they do realize that Mother Nature is going to take care of herself. So I just, you know, moving forward a little advice, Scott, my liaison report. Thank you.
Ms. Greenow.
The next Ethics Commission meeting will be tomorrow, Wednesday, November 20th at 3:00 PM in the Administration Building.
Okay, seeing no further reports, I'll entertain, or do any members have items they'd like removed from the routine consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the routine consent agenda. Ms. Althoff makes the motion, Mr. Gotamaller seconds. Clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Have all voted who wish. Motion carries. Next, we'll move to ordinances. Before I ask for a motion here, I will ask that the board choose to vote for the, not for, but vote on the proposed staff recommendation first before we make any amendments. I think it's going to be a little bit cleaner instead of juggling numbers and it'll be a lot easier on staff and for ourselves and the public to follow along with what's going on. So anyhow, I will entertain a motion to approve items 17B1 and 2. Mr. Scala.
I move to adopt the fiscal year 2024/2025 Annual Appropriations Ordinance that has a schedule of expenditures totaling $270,303,81 and a schedule of revenues totaling $270,303,81, which includes the following recommended amendments as provided to you this evening at your place to the preliminary budget that was filed on October 15th, 2024, and an ordinance providing for the levy of taxes for McHenry County, Illinois for the fiscal year starting December 1st, 2024 through November 30th, 2025, in the amount of $64,995,097.
Okay, so it's a motion combining the two items. Is there a second? Ms. Beschess, seconds. Any discussion? Seeing no, Ms. Greenow.
There was a mandate in the election a week ago today, or actually two weeks ago today, and the taxpayers have made it clear that they do not want tax increases. They say that a small percentage of a large number is a large number and I would encourage everyone to vote no and to look at options, other options that have been proposed for this budget.
Mr. Gotamaller.
Thank you. I'm not quite certain how we got to this point without talking about the other options, but I did want to express my gratitude, first off, for the group of people that are here today. I know that I don't always agree with what they have to say, but I am glad that they're here and that they have the opportunity to hear about this. I wanted to talk a little bit about, and I wanted to bring this down to something that everybody sees every day. For instance, in 2014, our tax bill for the county was $692 if you lived in a $350,000 home. In 2023, we, by 2023, we'd actually reduced that by $126. So your current bill for last year, if you lived in that $350,000 home, was $565. That was for the- That was for the county's portion. Now, I'm not telling you that the county, your bill didn't go up. Actually, last year, your bill, if you lived in my neighborhood, which is on the north side of Crystal Lake, you paid $8.56, and, 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 actually, before I even get into these numbers, I wanted to talk a little bit about this aspect of it. I've always looked at, what does it cost me every day to live in my house? And I think that it brings it down to a number that we can understand. So every day I live in my house, I pay $8.56 to District 47, the school district. That same day, I pay $5.69 to District 155. I pay $5.93 to all the other districts except the county, all right? If I add the county to it, the county's portion of that bill last year was $1.55. So if I reduce the county's budget to zero, I would still pay $20.17, or $20.12 a day to live in my house. The county would only save me $1.55. So that's from, that's from 2014 to 2023. From 2023 to 2024, what's before you today? Assuming that we pass this before us, your tax bill is still going down $67.54 in that $350,000 home. It is not increasing as far as the county's concerned. We've actually lowered it. Our total lowering under this proposal is $193 from what it was way back when. Now, if we go to new growth only, and again, that's not what's on this motion, but if we go to new growth only, the tax bill reduces another $11.56, or a total of $1.33 a day, 3 cents per day. The final one, if you go the rest of the way and say no growth and no cost of living increase, and we would be the only board, only governing body that I know of that's pretending there was no cost of living increase, your, your total savings would be $16.63 more, or a total of $84 and some change. That difference between the budget that's before you and the one with no, no growth and no CPI is, is a total difference of 5 cents per day for a $350,000 household. It is not a tax increase. When you're taking the new growth, it's giving you a place for the people that moved into town and those increases to come, to those parties to share the burden of this government. And again, in the end, whichever way we go, it's still a savings. No matter which one of these you take, you are paying less for county government than you paid a year ago. It's only a question of whether it's $67 less, or $79 less, or $84 less. I know $20 matters to everyone, including myself, but it is not a tax increase. Thank you.
Ms. Greenow.
Yes, thank you. As I said in the Cal last Thursday, we've transferred taxes to the motor fuel tax and to the sales tax. So the taxpayers of McHenry County do feel that burden. On the possibility that we don't have the opportunity to look at new growth plus zero CPI increase, the impact of looking at that option would cost a half a month of our reserve for one year, and then during that year, starting in December, it would be our responsibility as a board to look at all expenditures and where the funding is coming from, and to realize as the year goes on what the impact will be so that we're not sitting here next year with a CPI, that we know every month, every quarter, what we're doing with our actuals versus our spending, where the money's coming from. And being on the Finance Committee might not be such a friendly, popular thing when you have to say, well, you're going to have to take this back to committee and look at how you're going to fund this expenditure, and what is actually needed, and what is something that is not, and where can we find efficiencies and economies in this. And I certainly hope that we have the opportunity to look at that. It will, I pledge to do that going into the next year, to encourage every committee, everyone on the Finance Committee, to look at what we're doing, to take responsibility for the rubber stamping of resolutions, maybe not purposefully realizing what was going on. But this is an opportunity. We do not have an issue with revenue right now. This proposal that we have keeps the sheriff, it keeps a half of the capital expenditures, and allows us to give the taxpayers a break for one year so that we can work together as a board to see what we can actually do to control our costs.
Mr. Reiner.
Yeah, I, you know, I just wanted to add just, just one comment. I mean, Ms. Greenow has found ways, and as, as some of our board members have said, it's only just a little bit of a raise, well, it's, it's only just a little bit of a cut. It's sustainable, and to be quite honest with you, my last vote is not going to be to raise taxes. I can see taking the new growth, which isn't an increase, new growth is an increase, but I, I think that living with this flat levy is more than doable, and I would just hope that we would keep it flat. Thank you.
Thank you. So I understand, I, first of all, thank you for being here. I, I understand where you're coming from. Many of us struggle, and I, I understand that. There were some questions asked during public comment, and I'd like to address those. Somebody talked about looking at fraud, waste, and abuse. I can tell you that we have an audit department that ensures that we do not have fraud, waste, and abuse. There are signs all over the county saying, if you see something, then report it. And they do, they look. So that's something that I want you to know, that it's something we take seriously, and so does our auditor. Another thing, somebody asked, how do departments have to justify their increases? So every department has to come to a committee, and they present their budget to the committee. And not only do they present the budget, they explain why anything is going to increase, and they have to tell that to the committee. Well, we, and after the committee asks the questions, the budgets get forwarded on to the whole county board, so as we are here. It is our chance to talk and ask questions, and we do ask a lot of questions. But the reason why we have the budget here that we do is because the majority of the board, of the, of you all sitting here, we have passed those budgets through committee to the whole board. So there was not any, there were not any budgets that were stopped at committee level. Everything was passed forward. If they, if you had a question or did not agree with one of the budgets, or the majority of a committee did not agree with one of the budgets, they should have been held back and stopped there. Someone else said that, did you get a lot of phone calls asking to increase taxes? No, I didn't get phone calls to increase taxes. But I will tell you, in talking to many of the people in our county, they enjoy, they appreciate, and they need the services that the county provides. And many told me that although it's a struggle, they would rather pay the taxes that they do so they can keep the services. If any of you have to go to the clerk's office and record something, if you have to call the sheriff's office, aren't you glad that they show up? If you have to go to court, you're glad that there's a judge there and a public defender or a state's attorney to help you. So one other thing, the increase that we are looking at is 2.4%. In my calculations, because, that it was originally 1.7%, and 80% of that increase was wages to our employees, an increase in wages. We want to keep our employees, and we want to have good employees and maintain them so we can provide good services to you. Also, it was increased after that because the sheriff asked for three officers, and we all would like a safe county to live in, and are happy that our officers are here tonight, thank you, that show up when we call them. So 2.06% of this increase are salaries. I, 2.06, that is the, the increase. It's, it's not 10%, it's, it's not 15%, and I understand it's an increase, but it's, it's not just going because we feel like we need to increase, you know, increase somebody's budget or buy a bunch of more, buy a bunch of paper. It is going to people's salaries, and we value those employees. So this is a hard decision, and it took me a long time to figure out which way I was voting, but I want to make sure, as my last vote, that I keep the county in sound financial position, and that's what I'm looking for. So I'm a vote, I'm a yes vote.
Dr. Sager.
Chairman, I realize that you, as a chair, ask that we consider the recommendation that's on the table first through vote, and I respect that request, but would you allow latitude for a couple of questions with regards to the budget of the whole?
Sure.
Thank you very much. Carrie, I'm hoping that maybe you might be able to just respond a little bit here. One of the things that I have been very committed to myself is that we finance three additional officers in the Sheriff's Department. And it's my sense that in talking to residents and in talking to businesses, as well as my colleagues here on floor tonight, that the majority of individuals support that increase because we have gone for several years here without any increase in numbers, and our current sheriff, I think, has done a remarkable job in terms of managing our needs in safety and security with the officers that we've had, but it's becoming more difficult as we continue to grow as a county. So that's one thing that I am adamant about maintaining in the budget. Second thing I'm adamant about is the capital improvements. We have made some significant strides, I think, in our policy approaches to financing and funding, not the least of which was the decision to add the motor fuel tax increase, which I supported and would continue to support. The underlying budget question I have is, if those two things, those two things alone were added to the budget, because I'm firmly committed to that, is it possible, is it possible to meet those two additions with a 0% CPI and new housing?
So I think we've been pretty transparent this, throughout the whole budget process, that the level of reserves in the general fund can fund that for a year. And we've talked a lot about looking to the future, specifically in '27, when $3 million of ARPA expenses moved to the general fund, the increasing pressure of wage inflation, you know, and even the resolution that just passed for the FOP contracts, that right out of the gate is using 1.4 of fund balance. So I guess to answer your question, is it possible? Yes, but it sets us up for a future where we may not even be able to cover just our basic operating expenses, taking the full CPI.
We met an hour prior to this meeting, Finance Chair Scala and Finance Chair Buer, and, you know, Carrie had made some different scenario adjustments today, and it, it gets really critical really, really rapidly. When you fold in this new FOP contract and then don't, any of the, any of the growth that's allowed, it, it, it happens fast. Is it possible? Yes. But then what? Will it be easier next year? No. It'll be harder.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I do appreciate significantly the work at multiple levels that the staff has done to provide us with the budget which is before us, to answer all of our previous questions, as well as questions which have been addressed today. I have the honor of serving on the RTA Board, and as we had at our last committee, the whole meeting, in terms of presentation, we're aware of the fact that there's a fiscal cliff coming in just about a year for transportation, and the reason is that we have inadequately, as a state, funded the transit system. We are the lowest funding state in terms of public transit systems of any state that has a major metropolitan transit system, as we do here in the state of Illinois. That came about because we refused, as a state, to look at proper funding on a long-term basis. And so we've gotten ourselves caught in a very difficult position. The current, our funds have carried us through, but as soon as those are gone, we won't be in a position to cover the cost of improvements to the hard stock, the rolling stock, as well as the infrastructure, but also in terms of operating costs, which is going to result in potential 40% reduction in service. I don't think that we can provide that chasm, if you will, in McHenry County regarding our services. I think we have to guard against that, and guarding against that takes careful planning to make sure that we are routinely, year after year, being fiscally responsible to meet our needs, not just in today's needs, but in terms of planning for a future, to guard the public from a significant failure of fiscal responsibility. Thank you.
Ms. Ness.
For the first time, I do agree with my colleague that we have an opportunity here, but I think we differ on what that opportunity is. By taking the mental health tax levy out of the budget, we did provide tax relief to our citizens in this county significantly, better than we have for a long time. By allowing the funds we have to be used to hire three deputies for the Sheriff's Department, who is called frequently to back up municipalities that do not have adequate police protection, that's a responsibility we have as a board. I mean, what's the sheriff supposed to do? Say no when a municipality calls for help because they're pulling a patrol out of the county that's not available to the county? We don't do that. Public safety is first. We do not produce a product. Our product is service, through clerk's office, through ordinances, through water, through sewer and septic. We are a service industry, and that service is provided by people that we hire and pay to do that job, to our residents. And so I feel a huge responsibility, this is my last vote, on this budget, and while I appreciate that people came out to express their opinion on the budget, we have spent literally hundreds of hours taking this budget apart, figuring out ways to make it work, giving you the best possible outcome we could, and I know that not everybody will be pleased with the vote. We play a long game as governing people. We, we don't look at just today. It's our responsibility to look 10 years in the future, and I think that's what we're doing here today. Thank you.
Let me take Eric first, you've already spoken twice. Mr. Hendricks.
Yeah, I, personally, looking at it, I, I support the 3% cut. It doesn't seem like that's an option, however, I do appreciate Ms. Greenow's work. I mean, what we have here is a no CPI increase. It funds everything the prior budget did, and I believe it only eats into half a month worth of reserves, and we do have a reserve, I don't know if overbalance is the right word, but we have plenty of reserves. You know, I do think when we put up the vote on the, the referendum to switch the mental health board from a property tax to a sales tax, you know, it said right in there that we are going to be reducing the levy by the property tax amount. are going to be reducing the levy by the property tax amount. I think reducing it by the amount plus new growth, I think that honors that. I don't think an increase for this year in particular of any CPI growth does honor that, and that was passed, that was at a county-wide election. So, I am in favor of a lower, but I do think that the no CPI increase plus new growth is a fair compromise.
Mr. Shorten.
Thank you. I've said this before and I'll say it again, both times that I campaigned for county board, the question was put to me, will you vote for, to reduce taxes? And every time, I think I was fairly consistent saying that I won't make that promise because I think that we need to have effective and efficient government, and sometimes there may come a time in the future where I might have to vote for an increase in taxes. This is not going to be this year. As I look at the spending that's put forth, and I appreciate the work that Ms. Greeno has done, I think that we need to vote against the increases before us and then consider her proposal. As I look at the data that I have, it's a couple of weeks old, the projection for the end of fiscal year 2025 will have a general fund balance of, in excess of board policy of $4.663 million. If we take what I understand Ms. Greeno's proposal and use the, some of those excess funds to pay for this budget to give the sheriff what he's requested, we'll still end up with an excess general fund balance of board policy of about $3 million. Now, in the next 12 months, the new board is going to have to work to, along with administration, to find opportunities to drive costs out of the system, and I think we can do that. The reason that those excess reserve funds are there is because in past years, we either overtaxed or underspent, and how we got there, I don't know. Maybe someone could give me answers, but at the end of the day, we have this excess money, and I think that we should use it for the purposes intended. We can continue to provide the services, and again, we will have to work in the next 12 months to drive costs out of the system, or a year from now, I might have to fulfill the part of my promise that I would prefer not to and raise taxes. But right now, right here, I'm going to vote against any sort of increase. I'm in support of new growth, zero CPI.
Ms. Althoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I feel like I should say no good deed goes unpunished. We have done a remarkable job over the last 14 years of reducing taxes. We understand. Our residents, our constituents have made it clear. However, I'll also note that they recognize the importance of local services. We had four referendums on this ballot, three of them passed here in McHenry County. I think people understand the value of what they get. Every single one of our committees that had the budget presented to them for that specific purpose, it's televised, televised, it's computerized. You can see it. We stream them. We are extraordinarily transparent. Ms. Greeno, I do appreciate your work, and we had a conversation tonight, and I look forward to pursuing some of those ideas that we had. But I also want to thank and acknowledge staff. I think they do a phenomenal job, and they have carried forward the direction and guidance this board has given them, which is to be responsible fiscally. We are one of three counties that have a AAA rating out of 102 counties. We have lower taxes today than we did 14 years ago. And by the way, we live in a state that is blue. We have individuals who represent us in Springfield who do not hesitate to pass down massive unfunded mandates that we then have to pay for. We live in a state that doesn't hesitate to take more of our dollars and use them for their purposes at a state level, as opposed to letting them run down to local government the way they're supposed to. We have a state that currently is facing a $3 billion budget deficit. Who knows what they're going to do in the next year and how that's going to affect us? I think that this proposal is extraordinarily reasonable. I think it's responsible, and as you heard, it is not a huge hit to our residents and our constituents and our property owners. Thank you.
Ms. Greeno.
Thank you again. Two things. Carrie, I wanted to ask you, just to clarify, the current amount, the dollar amount of the general fund reserve is what? And then how many months in excess is that of five months?
So, we're projecting FY '24 excess reserves to be just under two months.
Okay, but what's the dollar amount of the fund?
15 million.
15 million?
Mm-hmm.
$15 million, and two and a half months represents how much?
Two months.
No, no, right, but what's the dollar amount of two months? I mean, I'm just waiting to do the math.
15.
What?
So, the general, so the budget, it's based off of the budget?
No, no, I mean, I'm sorry, I clarify. It's a $15 million fund, and that's two and a half months beyond five, so that two and a half months is roughly?
It's two months. So, it's two months, so seven months, the difference, the two months is 15 million.
15 million? I thought you said the entire fund was 15 million.
No, the entire.
The reserve, the reserve.
The reserve is 56 million.
The reserve is 56 million, so it's 15 million for two months. Okay. So, looking out at the 2025 budget impact on the general fund reserve, what would the total dollar amount of that fund balance be, and where would that put us in excess of the five months, and what would be that dollar amount?
That would put us at 1.4 months over the, over the five months.
Okay, and that would be?
12 million.
12 million? Okay. So, to reiterate my dedication going forward with the new board on keeping this in check and controlling the spending and being prepared for the next year's budget. My second thing is, I'd like to appeal the decision of the chair to vote on the budget on the table before taking amendments.
I haven't made a decision. That was my request.
I would like to motion to amend the levy and budget ordinance to be new growth and zero CPI.
Discussion on Ms. Greeno's motion. Seeing two? Mr. Scala?
Well, I understand the motion, but I would prefer to have numbers associated with that, because when you're talking about the levy and you're talking about the budget, those have actual numbers associated with them. So, if you, and that's fine, I just, all I'm saying is if you can amend that to have those numbers in there, and then, I guess, on the subsequent side, with the amount of money that's being taken out, what are we, what are we doing with the actual budget as far as where those dollars are coming from? I understand the levy side, but when it comes to the budget side, where do those dollars on the general fund side come from?
So, after working diligently with Carrie, and I want to make it clear that she provided data, she's not advocating for a position, but just as she did the work on all of the proposals that were brought forward, she provided accurate information. And so, the zero CPI would require us to go into the reserve, impacting it by approximately a half a month, which would be, still leave 6 million in excess, at least at the end of 2025. My commitment is to work with the future committees and the finance committee to be absolutely aware of what we're doing when we're passing resolutions, and if we see that there are things that are being mandated by the state that are unfunded and there's no other place to go, then at least we know going into the budget well before next September, October, November, of where we stand as we go through the year. And that's just a matter of everyone really paying attention and sometimes saying no. But does that, does that answer your question?
It does not.
All right. Can you help me understand more about your question? I'm saying that.
Well, so, I think part of the answer was that the budget, as far as the expenditures go, would still stay the same.
Correct.
But the revenue side of that would come out of fund reserves in the general fund.
Correct, and that would be about a half a month.
Okay, so, I understand that.
Got that on a spreadsheet.
Okay, and that's fine. I understand that aspect of it. So, in the levy ordinance, what would the levy ordinance change to? It was, it was, what are you, I don't know what you're pointing at. Oh, sorry.
It's.
Okay.
Yeah, all these numbers are tied up.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, you want me to read it?
So.
The whole thing?
Well, no, so I, so all I'm saying is, so what you're saying is that the budget amount will stay exactly the same, the 270 million, 303,081 dollars. So, the budget's not changing, it's just strictly the levy ordinance that would be changing, correct? Well, and that's why I'm asking for clarification, so that people understand what we're doing.
Carrie, Carrie can help.
We aren't proposing any, this, as presented, there are no reductions in cost, right? We're just going into the reserve.
Based on our initial discussion, I put together, Carrie wanted to see what the numbers would be based on recommendation number three in our budget proposal, which was, or not recommendation, scenario three, which was zero CPI and new growth. And in that budget presentation, we said, based on that funding, it would be no recurring supplementals and partially funded capital. So, so we sent that.
Stop that. In a staff's position, we haven't had any new deputies in two decades.
Okay, but that's not what's being proposed here. There's no, well, I'm just, Carrie was speaking, and I'd like to hear what she has to say. Please, Pete.
So, we, our recommendation was, we'll leave it there, and if you guys want to add the deputies, then please add the deputies. That's where, so, when we present, when.
But then, so after I sent that to you, we talked through it. You wanted to add in the recurring supplementals using reserves and then keep the partially funded capital.
Yes.
So, to answer your question, the expenses went down by 3.1 million, which is the transfer to the capital fund, to fund about half of the capital that was proposed.
So, to be clear, the staff, all of the recurring staff expenses are still in the budget?
Yes.
And the half of the capital?
And to be clear, it is more than three deputies, but three deputies are the largest. We have new money for election judges, and we had some court staff, some unavoidable software changes, and those kinds of things. These are costs that are not going away.
Well, I guess, can I just add on to that, and kind of to answer your question, Mr. Shorten, when you asked about where this reserve came from, and there's a lot of things that are moving, especially through the general fund, but the two specific things are the Lake County jail revenue that we're receiving and the ARPA dollars. So, the reason why this was not a recommendation is because we're essentially funding recurring costs with two sources of revenue that are heavily impacting the positive general fund reserve that will be coming to an end.
We try to focus all of that one-time Lake County money into capital projects for obvious reasons.
Yes.
We're going to have deputies that are going to be here for 25 years. We want to tie them to an expense that's going to continue.
And I just want to make it clear, I understand that, and the understand, you know, what we discussed is going into next year, watching that and seeing where we are and what the impact is and what can be done about it. So, it's all still in here, and we're talking one year.
But it's not one year.
Well, I'll tell you something. The average claims on unemployment have been six a month. They are now 20 a week, and people are, I mean, even if their wages go up, their household incomes are not because of inflation. So, it is a year to take consideration of the taxpayers.
I'm glad they're going down.
Mr. Shorten.
I just, and this has probably already been clarified, but this document that I received, is that reflective of? Nothing? Okay.
So, that document is taking, so we have the budget on 30-day review starting in October, so we have to show where the budget is changing, and so if you look at the changes on that sheet, it's the resolutions that were just passed for the FOP contracts.
Okay.
So, we're already, so we take the budget that's on 30-day review, and we're adding to that, adding it.
Going another 1.4 million. So, this is reflective of new growth plus the 2 point?
No, that is reflective of the budget that was on 30-day review, which is.
Yeah, it was 4C.
4C, so it was the 2.4 of the CPI, which, again, all this is outside of the mental health levy being removed.
All right. So, this has nothing to do with Ms. Greeno's proposal?
Correct.
Thank you. It, nothing on, it has nothing to do on the revenue side. All the expenses are still there.
Do we have a motion on the floor that we can vote on? I mean, can?
We do. The motion to amend to zero CPI plus new growth.
Thank you. Could we, could I call the question?
That's true.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to have a voice vote on the motion to amend. All in favor, say aye. Against? Nay. Too close for me to call. I want to see a show of hands, those in favor of the amendment. Motion does not carry. So, we are going to be back to our original motion that Mr. Scala presented. Any further discussion?
No, God, please.
Seeing none. Clerk, could you open the voting, please? Voting is open. Motion carries. Pete, you got a report for us tonight?
Just two things I want you guys to watch for. An invitation to the MCEDC Annual Investor Meeting. This will be on the 10th of December at, I said MCC, the meeting will be at MCC, it's for the MCEDC, and it's going to kind of be a preview of likely where their new digs are going to be, but that'll be at 4 o'clock on December the 10th, and it's for all investors in the MCEDC, and obviously, all board members are investors. Finally, and I just wanted to thank, I know what we all think, Carrie, everybody did a good job on the budget, but Carrie, thank you. That was a good job. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Scala makes the motion. Ms. Ness seconds. All in favor, say aye. Have a good night.